Texas Marion.
Evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Madison Public Schools Board of Vicentation to an open. And if we can stand and let's create. But we did a civic act of being states of America and to the Republic for which it stands on nation. In this book, if there be justice for all. Looks like we have a. A big crowd of visitors today. We'll start with our school community session, which includes our public participation. And before we start, Emily will read the kind of the rules.
So thank you for joining us in person and online. The board welcomes public comment at our meetings. We ask when speaking to state your name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes in order to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. I'll give you a notice when you have thirty seconds left so we can move things along. We're happy to hear from our community, but at a meeting like tonight, so should not be expected that the board or administration will respond. Public comment is not a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow up. And if you're joining us tonight via Zoom and you'd like to speak, please just raise your hand and you will be called upon. We'll typically go in person and online to alternate. So I'll start in person. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I didn't want to go first. I'm a Viva Loria. I'm Vice President of the Hand Music Booster's Org. And I live at one sixty seven Scotland Road. My son is in marching band, concert band and jazz band. So he's very involved in the music program. And I just wanted to speak to advocate for. Music instruction at the younger grades. So I'm. As a music board, we are concerned that for fifth grade next year, the plan is, I understand it and give me. I am not. I'm not sure where you are in this plan, but it looks like the plan is to cut the music instruction for fifth grade from sixty hours a week. To. Or sixty hours. A year, sixty days a year to thirty days a year. I'm really sorry. This only came to my attention today, so. It's still trying to get out to speed with it. And students. In fourth grade, you know, we just are very concerned that students are going to get the instruction that they need and have support that they need for learning how to play instruments. The marching band, as you probably know, is about half the size that it was before COVID. So. If we cut. The time that younger kids are spending doing music, I'm concerned that that's going to even. Decimate the marching band more. It's also, I just see from my son. That. You know, his entire time playing trumpet and now he plays saxophone in marching band has been through school. And he's really thrived and he loves music and. You know. Really get so much out of it. And I think every student should be able to get, have that opportunity. Also, just, you know, the thirty hours that were, the thirty days that we're talking about for. Fifth grade for the next academic year is one third what the state recommends. They recommend ninety days. That's what our neighbor Guilford has. So that's a third of what our neighbors doing and. You know, Guilford's known for their arts and I would, I would really like to see us put more effort into arts here. And boost arts and particularly music.
Right, we'll move to online folks. If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand. Randy, you can go ahead and unmute and you can speak.
Hello. Hello.
Can you hear you?
Okay, good. I just wanted to say that I, we really can't hear at home what people are saying. So I just wanted to let people, let you know about that. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, now we'll see what we can do about that. Thank you. I'll give someone else a chance online if anyone else would like to speak tonight. Fixing the mic in here. Sandra, where you want to go?
Let's do it from this one.
Emily, can you say something?
Yep. So how about this? This is better. For the folks at home. I think Randy still has speaking privileges, right?
Yeah. I'm showing full mic.
Okay, all right, let's go, let's go in person and we'll come back to see when we can figure that out. Who else would like to speak in person?
Hi, my name is Paul Sislow. I live at two thirty South Road and I have two boys in the fourth grade. And my understanding is that if we reducing the contact time for Spanish by sixty percent and getting rid of the theater. For the fifth grade and I want to voice my concerns about that. All of the different reductions, those are the two ones that I are most sure of, that all the reductions represent a reduction in the quality of education that they're getting. And I, I came to Madison because of the education for my kid. And so I find that overall objectionable. Particularly because there's been discussions with the PRC community and others and we haven't gotten a full explanation or a discussion that that's. Helped us understand why it might be necessary for those reductions. I'm particularly unconcerned about the theater and the Spanish theater because it's not just. Teaching theater, the skills they learn in that theater class really helped them in life, getting over their state, their fear of presentations and getting able to be persuasive, persuasive in their discussions. And so I think it's, it goes way beyond just the topic that's being taught, although the topic is also valuable. In terms of the Spanish, you know, my kids haven't having Spanish since I started in kindergarten here. But they would, they only know one or two words. They would, they wouldn't even remember the teacher's name until they got to the fourth grade where it was every other day. Now they can complete, they can speak in a complete senses, not a lot, but they're doing much, much better than when it was just one day a week. And, and so I'd hate to see that reduction in the, in the contact time for the Spanish because I think it's. You don't get much bang for your buck if it's one, one, one time a week. And if you're doing every other day with Spanish, you're getting, you're getting a lot more value, a lot more education from the amount of time spent. So I want to voice that concern. But I second the other point about the music as well and some of the other reductions. They're all, all reductions represent a reduction in the education that they're getting from what the previous kids got and what the current standards are in this town. And so I find that very concerning and I hope you can spend some time addressing that, addressing the parents more. And getting more feedback before making final decisions about that. And that's, that's the main, main point I wanted to raise today.
Thank you. All right. So are we just trying to online?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, if you're joining us from the outside, there are some seats if you want to come in and make yourself comfortable. All right. So do you want to draw, um, call in our next person?
Does Randy want to speak?
I don't think Randy, I think Randy just wanted to. Inform us that he couldn't hear us. Okay, so let's try Sandra.
Sandra, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. I have just written an email to each of the members and I would just like to read it quickly. It's not very long. And it was the best way for me to. To address the changes that. I understand are. Possible at the Brown School. So I'll just read it quickly.
Okay.
My name is Sandra Olenek. I'm an artist and I've taught art in my studio in North Madison for over a decade. My background includes teaching art to grades one through twelve in Rochester, New York. I also started a learning through art class. Um, oops, um, wait a minute. Things are not great in this email. I received. I was awarded a Connecticut Commission in the Arts Grant. And I currently have two Brown students who I teach in my studio and I've taught many others from Brown. I believe all the arts are a key to successful learning and living. Students learn to use more right brain creative thinking. Throughout history, when art flourishes, civilization has flourished. I address all the arts. Taking away the arts helps destroy the inner child. That is when we all naturally begin to dance, sing, draw. Involuntarily. These are abilities that are needed to be re-taught now and in the future. Many adults have lost that inner child. Artificial intelligence will one day do away with many school subjects, I feel. Who will be the next writers if students don't experience independent thinking and solving problems? Test scores do not equal intelligence. Art promotes a forward and meaningful future. Reducing music will silence a chorus of blended voices and instruments. Why? The arts are a way to feel accomplished as students and adults. Finally, learning how to produce something of quality through study, trial and error and hard work enhances any student self-confidence. In my estimation, don't reduce important opportunities for these students. And I just want to add both of my grandchildren Laurel and Birch went to Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, we'll move back in person. If anyone would like to speak, just raise your hand. Go ahead in the back. Yeah.
Hi, my name is AJ Miller, one hundred and ninety five Road in Madison. I've got two boys in school, so they have a. A daughter as well. So I have three children in the school system here. In my professional career, I lead large engineering teams, Fortune one hundred company. So. I understand science, I understand technology very well. Those are areas of expertise for me and I understand the value that they have. And I also understand that some of the decision that the board is facing about some of the scheduling is due to test scores. And the need to increase test scores. And I, I would like to remind the board that. Even in my line of work where I do a lot of work with technology, the most important skills are public speaking, presentation. These skills that you learn in these, some of these classes, we're talking about removing from, from these curriculums. In lieu of doing more science and social studies work to increase those test scores for the town. I'd like to say that that is actually some of those skills that we're removing. Are more important to your future and to your career. Than having a higher test score is necessarily. I'd also like to add that. My, my oldest has gone through the theater program. It is by far the most well-regarded program at the schools. Every kid I've talked to loves it, even kids that are shy, even kids that are normally introverted. They're at an early enough age where they're still willing to try new things and this is a completely new thing for them. And it gives them a skill that they can build on top of. They can always learn more in books. They can always improve their knowledge. They're going to go to college. They're going to get masters and PhDs. They're going to. Get plenty of opportunity to learn. These, those skills at a deeper level. Once you've made up your mind that you're not good at public speaking, or you're not the type of person that stands up in front of crowds, or you. Don't have the second language skills built into you at an early age. That stuff doesn't come back at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old or forty years old. That stuff needs to happen when the kids are really young and it's really important. I'd rather. Emphasize when the kids are older, high school, great, let's up your, your knowledge on some of these subjects if we need to do that. When you're younger, you need to foster some of these really core skills that I think are important to keep in mind.
Person, anyone else would like to speak?
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dennis Fulpie at four fifty four Bartlett Drive. The truth is, my wife should be speaking tonight. She's an executive board member of the Ryerson PTO and very, very active in the town, but. A little upsetting for her to speak, so very. You know, I didn't expect to be here tonight as I normally trust that the Board of Ed and our school leadership. Has the best interest of our students in mind when they make major curriculum and educational program decisions. And especially when things are changed or taken away because of what has transpired over the last few weeks. That trust has been broken and I'm deeply concerned. Up until now, I have taken for granted how curriculum decisions are made here in Madison. I simply assume major decisions such as taking away sixty percent of Spanish instruction or forty percent of STEAM encoding. From the fourth and fifth graders would go through a rigorous prod. Excuse me, a rigorous process with feedback loops before they were implemented. However, it appears in this case, decisions have already been made and there's nothing we can do about it. We have received extremely limited information on the rationale for these changes and I guess that's a big part of the problem. We have a very limited information on changes that while I've heard or only proposed seem to already be set in stone. In fact, we've heard that Brown teachers have already moved to Poulsen. Which means that changes that are proposed for next year are affecting our students this year. I've also heard that the primary rationale for these reductions in related arts are based on scheduling and building issues. When we all voted to approve the school plans, these issues nor the curriculums were ever, ever discussed. In fact, we were led to believe that no changes to the curriculum for fourth and fifth graders would, would, would happen. But if scheduling and logistics is really the reason, are we putting that above the needs of our students? I certainly hope not. The other rationale for the changes seemed to be that we need to increase science and social studies. If that is true, then why are we reducing STEM encoding by forty percent when these are perhaps the best and most relevant application of science in the real world? My wife and I just attended the curriculum committee meeting earlier tonight and learned that the official position of the Board of Ed is that they don't get involved in scheduling decisions. Or any decisions related to scheduling, which these apparently fall under. While that may apply to other simple scheduling decisions, how can you say that a scheduling decision that affects twenty to thirty percent of our students' work school week? Shouldn't be reviewed and approved by the Board of Ed. Our parents, teachers, and most importantly, our students deserve an answer to that question. Thank you for your time.
Someone online would like to speak? Go ahead and state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Meredith Young. I live at seventy eight Wildcat Road. I, number one, just want to second everything everybody has said so far. But I also want to highlight that I have concerns specifically for our current fourth graders. I have a fourth grader. And they are going through a lot of transition. They have now gone from, you know, Jeffrey Ryerson to Brown. And now they're going to another new school and then they're going to be going to Poulsen. That's a lot of changes. Going to Brown has been a great transition, I think, for a lot of students, specifically my student. And they have developed a lot of independence, especially with the changing of classes and with the electives has brought. New enthusiasm to their school day and I have a lot of concern about the feeling of them going backwards. And what that's going to look like for them. I also have a lot of concern that I feel like as parents, we've been asking these questions since orientation in, I think it was June. And it, they kept saying, oh, we're going to talk about it. We're going to talk about it. And I still have yet to see a formal presentation on what it's going to look like. That's all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Huffman. I live at fifty six Cedar Croft Drive. And I, again, I'm mostly seconding things that other people have already said very well before me. I have two kids in the school system, including a current fourth grader. And as another person said earlier, you know, my wife and I chose to move our family here and buy a house in Madison. Precisely because of the school system and not because it. Necessarily got the best standardized test scores or anything like this, but specifically because Madison seemed to emphasize whole child learning. And the importance of the arts and other subjects that are not necessarily involved in or part of. Traditional book or curriculums. And my wife and I have been extremely disappointed to see these proposals and likewise very disappointed about. How the information reached us. And I would also like to say that precisely to the point that was raised a minute ago. My daughter, who does struggle with. Shyness and making public presentation. my daughter, who does struggle with shyness and making public presentations and self-doubt and everything, while being an extremely strong student academically, has really blossomed and flourished even from the fairly brief time she has had in the theater program with Mr. Price at Brown. And she also had the opportunity to participate in some of the Tiger Troop after-school projects. And those have been, I mean, a great, so much of her experience in the Madison schools has been, they really have been some of the most important experiences for her so far. And I think, I agree, I think it is incredibly important that they are happening at this point in her life when she can still build that sense of confidence. And I would hate for her not to have the opportunity to continue with the theater next year and also for other students, including my younger daughter, to have that opportunity in the fourth and fifth grade years going forward. And I similarly am very dismayed by the extreme reduction in Spanish language time, which I again think is extremely valuable. I have spent a good amount of my academic and professional career making use of multiple languages for my work. And I recognize and am familiar with a lot of the research on the benefits of multi-language education. Particularly very well, but I would like to.
Yes. Hi, my name is Maya Bird. I now live at thirty-one Morgan Park in Clinton, but I grew up in Madison. I grew up in the Madison Public School System since I was in third grade. I see many administrators and I recognize faces of, which makes me very happy because I trust that it's all in good hands. But I graduated from Hand in twenty-twenty-one, and I'm here today, as any others, to comment on the changes to the fourth and fifth grade curriculum. I understand that the changes are complex, and I'm sure that they have been made with great thought. But when I read through and understand how our students next year will be experiencing school, it saddens me. And I don't wish to propose new daily outline or specific schedule because frankly, I don't have enough information or experience to do that. But I want to urge everyone on the board, in this room, and in our community to think about allowing more diversity into our classroom by putting an emphasis on our arts and our STEAM programs. Language, music art, music art, all kinds of sciences build upon each other. It can really help students learn to think in ways, or question the world, or see beauty where others may not. These aren't the kind of things to push off until middle or high school. We, as a community, as a school system, should be encouraging our young students to learn in a variety of ways so they can solve problems, they can navigate different social and academic scenarios, and see all the possibilities that there are for their lives. I also want to suggest that by limiting the frequency of classes, especially those that may encourage different learning styles, students who thrive in those classes or may have had them as an expressive outlet may lose those safe spaces or spaces where they feel that they are most comfortable and heard. As someone who is in orchestra and theater, art classes, the spring musicals, playing sports, took French every year, I was in our games program, our STEM program up at Hand. I still got a comprehensive education in my staff's classes, in my English classes, in my history and physics classes. And I deeply urge the Madison Public School System to see educational variety as an incredible value. By creating a more equal distribution between subjects, our schools can allow students to grow in the best way for them. Also, our school system needs to be helping our students get excited about all sorts of subjects and allowing them to choose individual interests later on. Doing so will create our vibrant students who truly love to learn, which can help the Madison Public School System as a whole continue to earn accolades, such as the Blue Room status that Hand did achieve last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online would like to speak? Who's next?
Hi. Sure. Hi, I'm Stephanie Ampert. I live at ninety-two Bartlett Drive. I have a seventh grader and I have a fourth grader actively. I don't want to hash out the past too much, but I get a little emotional at these meetings because the correct referendum failed for those who haven't lived in this community for ten years, when a false narrative was played about the closure of Island Ave. The correct referendum was two new elementary schools built that would meet the needs of K through three, and we would have kept Brown as is. That's the past. Now, seeing where we are, I agree with all that's been stated, and also there needed to be more input before these changes are made finalized. I also coached the fourth grade girls' basketball team, and on the way to practice today, I asked Josie, Josie, there's some changes coming next year in fifth grade supposedly. And one of those changes is that you may not have theater anymore. And her response was exactly, no, no, no. And then she said, what's going to happen to Mr. Price? And so I just want us to think about how impactful these teachers and these activities and these programs are on these children, if that's the response I got from a fourth grader when she said, you may not have theater next year. So let's reflect on the past, accept where we are, and make good choices going into the future that get our children what they need for a balanced education. We pay the taxes to live here in a great community with great educators. I trust the Board of Ed. I trust our leadership and our teachers. I want to not have to worry about this as much. And I want it to work the way it's supposed to work, and right now, I don't feel like it is. Thank you.
My name's Erica McMillan. I live at twenty-four Lenore Drive. I wholeheartedly echo all of the comments that have been made, especially around the theater arts program. I have two students in the school system. One is in fourth grade, one is in seventh grade, and they are both complete theater nerds, and they would be really proud of me for calling them that. And for both of them, their love of theater was awakened by the program at Brown. My fourth grader currently has already been through that trimester and came home literally brimming over with stories and excitement about that class. And I think what we need to amplify right now is this idea of this window of time when they're in fourth and fifth grade. It's a really magical developmental time for them where they are still playful. They're still open to new experiences, you know, some of the things that have already been said. But I'm really concerned about pushing this first exposure to theater to sixth grade for a number of reasons. Number one, there's so many offerings at Paulson that there's a lot of kids who will not opt to take theater. And if you don't give the kids a chance to be required to take theater, they won't find out what they're missing. And unfortunately, theater does have that stigma of nerdiness. And when you don't require the kids to try it, they're going to probably brush it off. And that just makes me so sad because of all of the reasons that people have already said of the value of theater arts and performance and the public speaking exposure and the collaboration with classmates to create a bigger project, a bigger whole than each individual person. And that kind of teamwork and that kind of caring for their classmate can't be taught through an FDL lesson. And it can't be taught in a high school public speaking class. This is where the kids are eager to continue to bond with each other in a way that just we won't have again in their development. I really urge you, for you, the Board of Ed, and for our administrators, to see the value of exposing the kids to this type of learning at this point in time in their development. And I recognize, and I'm so grateful to our administrators for putting in the time to help ease through these transitions of the building changes and the, you know, some of the things that Stephanie alluded to. And I also really think that as a community, we deserve to be able to have some input on this. And I am really glad that the Brown PTO brought this information to parents because I fear that without having had that information given to the Brown PTO by certain employees of the Madison Public School System, that the parents wouldn't have been given this information until March. And March is very far into budget planning season. And I am very concerned that if we hadn't had the chance to give feedback on it now, that we wouldn't have had a chance to have any sway, if we have any sway at all. So, thank you.
Someone online would like to speak? So just raise your hand, and we'll come back to you. I'll go in the back first, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jenny Nye at sixty-six High Hill Circle. I currently work as a data scientist, and I have a previous career as a professional musician on Broadway. I recently learned of the proposed related arts changes in fourth and fifth, just through word of mouth. My oldest son is in first grade, so I really wasn't aware of what the current curriculum was. But when I saw the reductions proposed for so many important enrichment areas, it just greatly concerns me. All of the areas with cuts are meaningful to well-rounded education, but I'll just focus on music because that's the one that I'm most familiar with personally. Seeing that cuts will be made to a music curriculum that already falls short of state and national standards is highly concerning to me as a parent. You're probably all aware of the numerous studies showing how music education is incredible for the growing brain, especially at those younger ages. It synthesizes motor, cognitive, and sensory systems in a way that builds neural pathways that other disciplines just can't create. It builds pattern recognition for language development and teaches kids grit, resilience, and persistence. This fall, I saw the NISH report naming Madison as a top-ten school district in Connecticut, which we shall be very proud of. I was curious what those other top-ten schools offer for music education. In researching those districts, I found that all of them have not only regular general music instruction, but also ensembles in the fourth and fifth grade. Greenwich and Darien have a strings program starting in third grade and band in fourth. Westport has orchestra, band, and choir starting in fourth. Yvonne has a strings program starting in fourth. Farmington offers fourth grade strings and fifth grade chorus, orchestra, and/or band. The students can pick two. Glastonbury has fourth and fifth grade band and chorus. Ridgefield starts choir and orchestra in fourth grade, band in fifth. Wilton offers strings in third and band in fifth. So Madison is really the outlier here. We're not only cutting time dedicated to music education, we're also lacking robust ensemble opportunities for our fourth and fifth grade students. We need better offerings with full ensemble and small group lessons, opportunities weekly. I personally know many trained musicians. They work now as lawyers, doctors, engineers, teachers, and more, in addition to those who continue to career in music. What these people all have in common is that they are problem solvers and lifelong learners. This is what I want for my children and what we should want for all of our children. By falling short of the state and federal standards for music, we're really causing a detriment to the children of Madison. I would also just lastly like to relay that parents of younger students like mine are hearing about these changes and are worried for their kids. We don't have a good forum for getting the correct information about the existing and new curriculum. I spent a lot of time chasing down contacts with older kids or people on the PTO so that I could better understand what was happening. The related arts cuts affect all families with young kids, and we really would like more transparent communication about the changes. Thank you.
Someone online? Anyone can go ahead and speak? Just state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Jose Aviles. I live in Cornfield Lane in Upper Madison. And to me, one of the things that hit me the most when I first heard the news, and pardon me, I just heard through social media about it. It wasn't really official communication. Granted, my daughters are still Ryerson. But was the fact, I'm Hispanic, my kids are half Puerto Rican. And language is one of the things that we kind of culturally, obviously, have a difference on. But to me, it's one of the skills that never in my life has been a downside. Like, there's never been a place in a situation where having fewer language skills would have been better. In fact, like, I am an engineer, and it's hurt me enormously to be able to speak English and Spanish. Obviously, my first language is Spanish. But this is the time in their development where I feel like the most impact could happen. I grew up speaking English and Spanish, and I've seen people trying to learn later in life all their language and how frustrating that could be. And for me, it's like a tremendous skill to give our kids and a tremendous signal that it sends that we are including more diversity into our community that, you know, sometimes doesn't seem to have. On top of that, I'll echo what everybody else said as far as theater and music. And for me, I feel like, yes, math, obviously, and science is good for engineering. But I did theater in school too, and that developed my speaking skills, my presentation skills, communication, teamwork, and all those skills that are developed through doing things rather than reading books. So I just really would like to understand what was the thought process behind giving our kids less tools on skills that are critical in timing and life skills, really. So, that's it.
Yeah. We had someone raise their hand. Yes, did you want to go first?
Maureen Burke. I live at two-thirty Cops Road. I have two children on the fourth grade, and I echo everything that everybody said to this point. I wanted to bring up something a little different. When I heard about the changes, my immediate reaction was to do research around what other high-performing schools do because Connecticut is not a growing population. It has an aging population. And in order for Madison to thrive, it needs to be competitive and continue to draw in young families, which I understand until we moved here in two thousand twenty, enrollment was declining. Now it's slowly increasing because people are choosing quality schools. When I looked online for what information was available, I looked at Darien, New Canaan, Greenwich, Westwood Ridge, schools that are in the category that Madison is often spoken in the same breath with. And in all cases, those school districts will be offering significantly two to three times more Spanish than was being planned. And similarly, the information wasn't quite as widespreadly available, but arts and music, they would be offering more. So I bring that up from a competitive standpoint. I also would like to highlight the fact that those schools are K through four. I think in the case of Guilford, all the others were K through five, maybe one K through six. And I've heard the argument that it's not possible to offer different things to different kids of different grades if they're in the same building. And I would challenge that based on the fact that those schools are doing just that. So I would like to just point out that it seems like other schools that we will be compared to are able to figure out how to offer different things that are age-appropriate to different critics. Thank you.
Hi. Sorry. My name's Melanie Lotti. I'm from two-eighty Opening Hill Road. I get the feeling I'm in a room of theater kids, and it feels really good. So I'm glad everyone's here. So many wonderfully smart, powerful, passionate people who are civically engaged. That's what theater does, especially when you're engaged in it at an early age. So I really echo everything everyone said. I moved to Madison with my family in two thousand nineteen primarily because of the strength of the school system. I have a third grader, a neurodivergent third grader at Ryerson who loves school. He's deeply engaged in music, theater, and foreign languages. I'm also concerned about the proposed changes to related arts offerings in fourth and fifth grade. You can't build and maintain strong music ensembles or theater programs at the high school level without creating a pipeline of enthusiastic and well-trained upper elementary school students. Similarly, you can't achieve fluency or proficiency in foreign languages without taking advantage of the critical period for language learning that it will close around age ten or eleven. All these skills require years of practice and effort, and it sounds like the school system to date has done a pretty good job with most of these and seen that the results are worth the effort. I think we need high-quality music ensembles, theater arts experiences, and world language programs to support our children's cognitive, social, and emotional development. These experiences improve standardized test scores and result in better college and professional outcomes. I'm an alumni interviewer for Yale, where I attended college, and I speak with five to ten Daniel Hand High School students per year who are aspiring Yale undergraduates. They generally love. They generally love school here, and I think it prepares them well for these sorts of college experiences, but the vast majority of them kind of lament the fact that there aren't there isn't more support in the community and the schools for the arts specifically. And it's it's unfortunate that such a well-funded school system isn't doing more particularly in the arts. And I think that if we decided to do less and not more, that would have a detrimental effect. So along with with other folks here, I urge the Board of Ed and anyone else in a decision-making capacity to look to the model of other high-performing school systems and prioritize related arts offerings throughout the K through twelve experience. Because arts education is education and it's not optional, and it's it's really, really important that we can have conversations like these. Thanks a lot.
Hello, my name is Beth Azabeta, eighty-one Silo Hill. I have a son at Ryerson and daughter in fourth grade at Brown. When our daughter ended her time at Ryerson, all she could talk about was I can't wait for Brown. Her first first month at Brown was an absolute joy to watch. Her growth and development was astounding. I believe our daughter was most excited about gaining more independence, freedom of movement, the assortment of related art specials, and the amazing teachers and different students she interacted with each changing day. Oh, and the lockers too. As a parent who stayed involved and attended the school meetings related to this Brown transition, I always heard the question asked, are the fourth, fifth graders going to retain their freedom of movement and mixed classes as the current model allows them to do now? The answer from the leaders to the parents was yes. I am dismayed and frustrated that this proposed plan has now turned that answer to a no with the core classes staying together throughout the whole day. Who exactly made this decision? And why are we hearing about it now? This needs to be clarified to everyone. Your recent communication announced we are retaining the two-team model. That is a deceiving comment. Your proposal is not retaining the current model of Brown at all. Many students, our daughter among them, is often challenged socially and enjoys the ability to move classrooms. Mixing up kids, this is a huge element to social and emotional development. Sometimes a relief is needed from the core classroom, a break from conflict. Many of us can probably relate that fourth and fifth grades can be a very, very challenging time in this area. By the model you're proposing now, you are also removing more teachers that interact with our students. The more teachers, the better. As we know, kids respond to teaching different teaching styles. I've also heard from parents of older children that the current Brown model greatly improves the transition into Poulsen. As a parent to a fourth grader now, and I remind you, a student that also went through COVID during kindergarten, we owe it to this specific class, graduates of Daniel Hand in two thousand thirty-three to do better and take into considerate consideration how they will be affected by next year's extreme changes, a huge disadvantage. Can you imagine growing up and losing half of your friends in one school year? This is exactly what will happen next fall due to the Jeffrey transition. And now you will also be taking away their special related arts classes and independent schedules. That is too much for one class to bear. Has there been any research, data collection, and discussions about this, specifically the current fourth graders, and how we can better transition them to Poulsen? Possibly a legacy program. I would like to hear the answer to that. I demand that the Board of Ed team consider this proposed plan. Do not cut related arts and add back and add back in elements of the current model. Your proposal needs further discussion and input by all involved, including parents, teachers, and everyone on this board. If there is a will, there is a way. We're hoping our voice, our voice will be heard at this level to work through these issues and find a way so that there will be no need to go further. Thank you.
If you can, so raise your hand. Chances, who else in person? Thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you all for coming out to express your opinion. It's meaningful to us. Thank you. Okay, next we have the superintendent's report, which will include the requested budget presentation of next year. Dr. Duncan. Yes, thank you, Chairman Duncan. I'm gonna move to the table for my presentation. Hey, thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the recommended twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It's recommended as it is all years at this time by the administration team. I always start by sharing that this work really does start in early September. The Central Office Leadership Team starts with their work, um, looking at the budget, where we stand at that point. And so I want to give a big thank you to our Central Office Leadership Team, Yale Donovan, and definitely Stacy and her staff, Stacy Novitz, our finance director, and her staff who take a lot of time and, um, you know, work on the numbers here. Heather Dawson has a huge piece in this as well, as you can imagine, from human resources. And then, of course, our our principals and administration team at the at the schools. This work does not happen, you know, just at the central officer leadership level. It does start at the teacher, you know, staff level at each of the schools where the staff are given an opportunity to provide input into this as we go through a process that, you know, as I mentioned, starts in September. So, uh, lengthy, lengthy process before we're going to you tonight. Similar to last year, we have the same basic, you know, major items that we we want to share with you and just kind of highlight what's going on in those those areas that lead to a budget increase that I I believe again will be one of the the smaller ones in our our area, but there's there's some reasons for that that I will I will share and and highlight throughout. Couldn't start without really sharing, you know, some of the highlights of, uh, our students' achievements over the the last year, you know, since we've we've seen you last, um, you know, I want to share, and the board is very familiar with the the Blue Ribbon Award that Daniel Hand received, and that was for high achievement. And so one of the very few high schools nationally that has been recognized for high achievement, oftentimes it's for closing the gap, but then this looks at all the students in the in the village, but not possible with all students achieving success. You know, we are a big, uh, sports and arts town, and so I highlight here, you know, the state championships that we've won, the music awards we've won, robotics, you know, so we do a lot of, you know, of of success for our students throughout throughout the community. As mentioned previously, you know, Niche has not only ranked their district high school, you know, top in New Haven County, but also, you know, within the tops in the in the state. And then as a as a board to where all five schools a year ago achieved a school distinction, and so that was a, you know, really high award for us. And I highlight that in in not only you know, frequently, but also in this kind of a budget document because this is really our strategic plan. This is, you know, what gets funded gets done. And so you know, it's 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 important to to see that the the money spent on education in Madison is 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 worth, you know, that investment. In terms of also, uh, building facilities, you know, we have toured the board in both Neck River and Brown Elementary. Where where we're heading, uh, you know, for for next year, as, uh, we discussed at facilities thing, Neck River is on time and and on budget, if not slightly under budget. You know, from where we we anticipated, so we are in a great place with with that. We've been very excited and pleased with the the process. What you're looking at there is the the gym area. So, um, you know, kind of the open athletic area that will be there for for students. On the other side of that, at the far side is the cafeteria with the stage in the middle. Brown Elementary is, that's the the hallway. It looks much different than it did, you know, just a a year ago. So we're excited about all of the all the work. I look forward to sharing that with the public who haven't had that opportunity to necessarily be in there. In terms of the 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 major accounts and the full budget document is available online, um, as well as this presentation, you know, starting to tomorrow. Um, it is in the board book right now, but it'll be on the line tomorrow as well. And we seek further comment from the from the public, you know, as we as we move forward. The we highlight kind of the major areas that, uh, you're already increasing and and some decreasing or staying flat in the kind of the su- success of that. I do want to highlight as, uh, this is my fourth budget presentation. Plan and cycle maintenance, each year prior, I have always increased that area. We have not increased that. We're not asking for an increase this year because of our our move from, you know, really operating six schools to the four. And having, uh, one new school, we want to see where the daughter certainly do have lots of needs going forward still in the, uh, facilities department and, uh, you know, that maintenance department. All those items continue to get more expensive, as we all know. And so, um, you know, we'll, uh, look at that in future years, but we did want to take a year and see where things land as we go forward. As with all school budgets, you know, we're looking at seventy-five percent or so of our, um, operating budget is being personnel. Um, and then when you add benefits in there, we're looking at about eighty percent of our our budget being made up of health insurance and employee costs. So, um, you see, you know, some, uh, dollar amounts there. I will say that, um, you know, this board has made one of the the biggest investments, if not the biggest investment ever, and it's Madison teachers. We we settled a teacher contract that was finalized till mid-November, but it is, um, a contract that looked at retaining and attracting teachers. We know there's a national shortage of teachers. We know that that has hit us here in Madison, uh, not to the degree of some of our neighbors or maybe other districts in Connecticut, but we do know that that is a a huge concern. So I again thank the board for making that investment. You know, I think that, um, we always hear the quality of education in in Madison is dependent on the the teachers we're putting in in front of our students. We always hear compliments about Madison teachers. So, you know, I, um, want to point that out. But the work that we do as a a budget has decreased that impact. So, um, the contractual increase for next year is, you know, in the four and a half percent range. You're looking at a total impact of about two point one three percent. We've made some difficult decisions and and made some decisions early rather than wait for them, uh, at this point. So, as we know, uh, we have increasing enrollment at the elementary level. Pretty steady at the middle school, but we've had to find enrollment at the high school. And so, uh, some of these reductions that happened already already occurred that already applied to that, which makes us, uh, able to bring that in. You know, we, uh, two point one three percent. Substitute coverage is, you know, going up. We 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 need to make sure we, um, pay substitute teachers what they're what, uh, as much as we can. We really, in some days, can't pay what they're what they're worth. It's, uh, but we do, uh, do it as good a job as we can in terms of, um, attracting and retaining substitute teachers and having building subs that so students and teachers see a consistent face. We do have, you know, some additions with sapping and some reductions with sapping, which I'll share on a future slide. So in terms of the, um, the major additions and 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 reductions, we are adding with the reorganization and elementary assistant principal, we are adding a preschool, uh, teacher, which was definitely needed in terms of the trajectory that we are seeing of, um, special education students at that level coming in as well as maintain a, um, a balance of of students, those those programming. We're we're thrilled to be able to offer more, uh, more prepay and wish we could do more. Two additional elementary teachers. And then also a special ed coordinator, which is a teaching position. So we'll have one for each of our our buildings to, uh, balance that. In terms of reduction, there are, um, reductions in in world language. Two in, uh, grade six, this is really balancing. So we have the same class size in grade six as we do in grade five. So we'll have the same number of teachers in in grade five as 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 grade six. It was, um, a situation where we actually had smaller class sizes in grade six. We would always choose, it's not always possible, we'd always choose to have the lowest class sizes in in elementary, lower, um, grades if if at all possible. With the, um, with the rework, we would need one less library media specialist and then with the, um, changes, one less PE teacher, point nine music in the district and point one art. In terms of health insurance, a really, um, big success item. Other districts that, um, we're talking to are in ten percent or higher. We were, we were in that range last year. We were in that that higher range, which this item would have been about a one percent additional increase to the to the budget. Health insurance, obviously, is very important. It's, um, you know, something we need to, uh, provide to our employees by law and 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 certainly to make, you know, maintain being attractive as a as an employer. But what I would, I would say here is that, you know, dollars that we can save here don't impact necessarily instructions, as long as we're providing high-quality health insurance, which we are. We've had a really good, um, year of, um, experience. And so when we met with a consultant, it was recommended that this would be the the increase. Again, I know we've heard from, uh, other districts and board members have talked to other other people in other districts. We we had a legislative breakfast where board members were concerned about health insurance costs going up in other towns. We've been back to another good year. This is probably an outlier, though, in terms of a good year. I don't want to, um, promise there or give any indication that this is going to continue on in the future. But we will take advantage of it for, uh, for this year. And it comes from, as I said, positive, uh, experience. Another area that is, um, you know, really an outlier for for us, um, excluding personnel. So you saw the some increases in in personnel on a previous slide. But we do have a decrease in, uh, public and private placements. And then a contractual increase in transportation. I do want to highlight the transportation increases being two point five percent. Again, our our neighbors and other towns are seeing four, four and a half, five percent increases in transportation. So we we continue to benefit from the contract that we negotiated four years ago, and we continue to get good service. The bus driver shortage continues everywhere, and so that's not necessarily related to to the, uh, increase in 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 that area. We've done some work to with the the bus company to try and track and and retain, uh, bus drivers. A little bit more detail on the, um, special education, why that's not going, um, up or, you know, staying flat. We had students aging out of the transition program, so that as board members will remember, twice we've had an extension of that program. It used to be until the twenty-first birthday. Then it was to the end of the twenty-first, um, the year that the student turned twenty-one, and now it's to the end of the year the student turns twenty-two. And so, um, we have had to increase that program, which is a phenomenal program and a very successful. We've had to increase that. We are now at a point where students are are aging out and, um, so we're able to see some savings in that. We continually work to keep students at district and keep students as close to home as possible. And, um, that comes in the form of less expensive placements, but we also feel that they're better for the student. And then we continue to collaborate with area districts on transportation and programming. Facility is one of a a pretty big challenge in terms of, um, budgeting for facilities this year. The the previous going from six sites to the four, but, you know, actually taking three offline and then adding a a new one that, um, we received that, you know, quote, right directly from from Eversource based on the square footage of the of the building. In terms of, um, the three buildings coming offline, we will maintain those till, um, January first, twenty twenty-six. So we will, um, you know, be the stewards of those those buildings, at which time we will turn them over to the town. The town is aware of that. We work closely with them. And so they are budgeting for the other half of that year. We have a reduction in repairs and maintenance at TCLC, Ryerson, Jeffrey. The utilities reduction because those buildings going offline, the utilities add for Neck River. And just to clarify what I think would be a a question wise Neck River utilities. You know, basically about the same as three different buildings. Uh, one is square foot, and then also it is, um, geothermal, which uses more electricity. Our hope is that a year from now, we will be adding solar panels to Neck River after we've gone through a year of the, um, building line. And that will reduce that electricity amount to potentially zero. That would be our. And that will reduce that electricity amount to potentially zero. That would be our 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 hope. And then as everyone that uh pays for electricity under knows that electricity is is caught up on its own. You know, uh to stay eighteen percent. So we're also having him adjust for that for um other three buildings as as well. In terms of um, you know, some miscellaneous operating uh items. We are adding additional reading materials for our K through three reading program. We are um no longer, we went through the N E S C process and um had a very successful visit. So we do not need to fund that. Um, and then there's also some purchases from the re-um configuration that were in last year's budget. Yeah, or this current year's budget that will not need to be in uh next year's budget. We do have some consumables going up, so that's why you see the core dues for um organizations. And such contractual increases as well. Technology oftentimes, the uh you know, pretty much every year, the technology items that we use are um going up. Based on the subscriptions or the uh the contracts with those uh those items each year. Uh, the reading program was Geodes. That was the program that our uh elementary teachers are piloting right now. And so based on that feedback, we uh wanna continue that. Um, and so you see that that on the next slide is of, you know, hundred nine thousand dollars uh for that for throughout the district. As the board is aware, we looked at um Bookworms as another potential um reading program. You know, our teachers and administrators, you know, looking at that program very thoroughly, um are not recommending that. We feel that our um Madison written curriculum is stronger. And um even though that I would cover the final two pillars that the the state is looking for us to cover. We are not looking to uh uh, we're not recommending the the purchase of that. And I will say, um, as we share again, I know we talked about it, the curriculum. Um, can we, we do not have the time to do all those programs together. It's just basically not possible within a um a drafted out um English Language Arts block. Um, based on what the those programs each recommend for minutes each day. This is the last year, uh we have a cost for the construction of Daniel Hand High School. So twenty years ago, it was put on the board's side of the budget. And the board has paid for that cost out of its operating budget. And then the last five years or so, we've had the declining um debt costs. And so this is the last time. So it's uh it's really good news, mostly good news. There's some bad news that next year we will not have the benefit of a reduction. Um, and as you see, the budget would be point five eight percent higher if we did not have this uh uh reduction. But the great news is that Daniel Hand High School is is paid off. And so uh so it will be great to think to to celebrate at the end of this year, I believe. Just again, to to recap the um the budget, it's a two point two seven percent increase. Um, you know, again, it would be higher and it is in fact higher because we do have that declining um mining debt. We um, you know, you see the biggest increase in uh the personal benefits, health insurance. Uh, again, last, just last year, that was over a one percent of the budget increase alone. Um, you know, a great uh uh success story there. You know, transportation, uh uh again, is another area that other districts are seeing higher special education costs. Again, higher and uh facilities. I think it's a um reasonable plan, given where we're we're happy at the decline um debt service. So this is a, this is a budget that um really is 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 looking at, you know, and understanding. That we do have a ninety million dollar investment in our schools coming on that we are paying for, you know, starting uh next year. Uh, we started some already, but the impact, you know, is pretty great next year. So I think we're we're very cognizant of that. Um, but we are, you know, getting a lot of things here that um, you know, we're not, you know, we're not uh shortchanging ourselves. In terms of, you know, the the it's really the other cost that we're we're saving. We're we're um had some major increases, as I shared with uh with contracts that we're we're um certainly do. And um, you know, great investment in education in Madison. Here's the highlights, just a, just another way, that's the same slide as I I started off. Important to show um the impact. And, you know, the budget request is one point five million dollars. That's not insignificant, you know, the uh the dollar amount does seem low. That's not lost on us as a, as a district that doesn't have a lot of support for um funding from the state, you know. So our um our support for funding, you know, federally and state is one of the lowest in the state. And so um, you know, I'm pleased we did hear the ECS money is basically staying flat for next year. But that's three hundred sixty thousand dollars. And so that's not a lot of money that we get, you know, from the state for that, that support. And um as the board knows, we've lost Title One funding for this year. Uh, we found out about that September. We expected to return, but we're, we are not placing that into the budget because we do not know at this time if we would have that back. Meeting uh next Tuesday at six P M for us to, you know, continue the the budget work. Um, and uh um we provided answers to some questions that board members invited us already. And uh are open to any questions I have the administrative team with me as as well. And and certainly if there's questions that, you know, you think of uh later as you're reviewing the documents, we're we're open to receiving those anytime. Um, either at the fourteenth or or Friday or possibly.
I would just start with, uh, reiterate with um Dr. Cook's and think to the outset when he thanked. Um, all of the administrative team and central office staff that helped put this together. Um, I think we're looking at a a lower requested budget than we had feared, largely because um the health insurance came in lower. And I would point out for um people in the room who aren't normally here, one of the reasons why um. That happens is because we you, we self-insure for health insurance. And um so uh that's something that not all, not many districts do. Um, and in doing that, um we we've gained some benefit over the years. So um it's not easy to do necessarily, but it's something that um has helped us and it's sometimes a budget uh in budget. So any questions for Craig? And thank you also for providing answers um to some questions that the board members already presented. Any other questions?
I have questions, but I'll send it to you.
Okay, thanks.
Or at the next.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Um, is Neck River geothermal?
Yes, so it is.
Did that change?
No, it was um drafted in the original plan with the uh price double um.
Right.
Options, but they went with geothermal, which this building is uh as well. You know, so that that's a recent um change for the 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 town, but.
Yeah, I knew about this building, but I was unsure.
I think you might, you might be confused because there was a question as to whether we were gonna do that with Brad uh with Paulson. And ultimately, we decided not to.
Yeah, no, I I I was unsure. I I think we discussed geothermal on multiple occasions for neck. And I didn't know it was, yeah, okay, I didn't know that. So what's the cost differential for, I mean, savings-wise, I understand, but what's the, wasn't that a higher cost?
There is a higher, you know, initial investment. It does take a little bit more of uh um space in the building. Uh, we visited other districts that had um and talked to them about, you know, positives and negatives. But uh um I can get you, you know, maybe what where we landed in that um piece. I don't wanna speak to it off the top of my head because um, you know, just I I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. But I will say um that, you know, two hundred thousand dollars they see for the electricity cost. That's the cost of running the building for next year. And that um it's been, it's recommended that we do not put the solar panels on, even if we had the money right at this point, which we potentially do. Um, right away, cause you have a year warranty and basically everything in the building. So before you um, you know, put those on the on the building, they wanna have it run a year. But we've been told um that once the solar panels are are on, it would be a net zero building. So there'd be basically no, no cost or no impact to the.
Can you also provide the board with the cost of maintenance and care after the year, the year is up?
Yeah, I think we, it comes with a a contract, but I can um give you of the geothermal system.
Yes, alright. And my only other question was on in special education with regards to, you know, lowering the cost. Because of transition, are we taking into account the savings portion of that? That three percent that we can actually set aside?
I was writing down your question, the first question, so could you, you might be there, yeah.
Of course, um, my question was with special education, the negative, uh, what was it, one nineteen? I think, yes, negative one nineteen. Is that taking into account the excess amount that you can carry over for savings?
No, that uh that's a separate piece. The three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we maintain is a, you know, kind of a um safety net. You know, um uh.
Right, but we can do that every year, so.
Can't do that every year, yes, yeah, yeah.
So are.
That is um, that is, you know, the the direct cost that we believe at this point, what those placements will cost next year. Now, um what what Liz does um every year with her team is contact them, try and get what costs those will be for July one. Um, you know, at this time, and sometimes we're able to get that and have the estimate. Sometimes we uh very, you know, sometimes we gotta put in actual, other times you have to estimate. Cause they, you know, we've had private facilities that won't tell us till, say, March or April what the cost will be. But they're usually in the, you know, three to five percent increase um range. But she's, you know, we're looking student by student. She works with Stacy's uh staff and and looks student by student on those placements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, well, Craig's making the long walk back over to to his seat up here at the board desk. Um, board member comments, any board member comments?
I I actually.
Yes, glad.
Um, so my comment would be, based on um the talk tonight and the comments tonight. And based on some of the negatives on, or decreases rather, in the reductions. If we can then, as a board, get some type of document. That spells out what the reductions are for Brown. If if we're just gonna single out Brown or or what the reductions are based on workforce. And then based on curriculum, so that we're all clear with what the budget has. And what's being cut, if you will, and so we can make a sound decision.
The one, one thing that I would respond is.
Sure.
Um, the, the fourth and fifth grade instructional s- scheduling model. That I think is at issue.
Yes.
What you're talking about is not budget-driven at all. It's schedule-driven. So.
Yes, but it has to be budget-driven because.
It'll have a budget impact if there's.
Exactly.
Here, reduction there, potentially, but it's not because of the budget that any of this does.
I'm not even suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is, if if there are curriculum reductions based on scheduling. And there's classes that will not be available that are now, then this board needs to know what they are. How it's gonna impact and what is the bottom-line number of that reduction?
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment that?
Sure.
Um, we need to make sure that when we have board member comments, that we're not essentially discussing a new topic that's not on the agenda. The board member, member comments are for commenting, but not for a new topic of discussion.
I mean, that was a request for information, so.
And that was what.
So, alright, um, thank you. And I do have one other comment, um, is that I would like to congratulate and thank our colleague. Galen, who has recently stepped up and volunteered to become the chair of the C I P committee. So congratulations and thank you, so.
Thank you.
There's one piece that was um just to complete my um reports. Shouldn't in Paris, I didn't tell you. You know, just the general um topics. We just found out uh yesterday that Connecticut has asked or has required us to um for schools in office to observe a minute of silence. In honor of uh President Jenny Carter on Thursday, January ninth, in accordance with an executive order. Uh, flags will already be made at half-mast until January twenty-eighth. So at ten o'clock on um Thursday, the schools and the offices will observe a moment, a minute of silence. Uh, so we'll pass that through to the schools and make sure that occurs. And um there are three meetings coming up that uh uh schools will have based on the elementary rework. The first one is for fourth grade parents, uh Thursday, January the like third at six P M at Brown School Auditorium. And then there's a meeting for Jeffrey families, Monday, March third, um at six P M, the Jeffrey School Cafeteria. And then there's a meeting for Ryerson families, Monday, March third, because you wouldn't have families in both situations. And it would be the same information shared, but that's at March third as well, six P M in the Brown Auditorium. So um we'll be sharing the information and any families that can't join that, like, we'll share that after um through the P T O, through our website, District Communication. So thank you, I just wanted to put that.
And I apologize for cutting you off when I'm walking back over into the laptop, there's more to go.
Whatever.
Um, alright, so we're through the superintendent's report and the board members' comments. Onto item five, audience response to information presented. Those will be the same rules, if anyone wants to begin, those will be the same rules that we discussed earlier.
Thank you for uh principals and administrators for.
Yeah. Thanks for your work on the budget.
Yes.
Okay, um, no further comments? Alright, um, thank you. Uh, consent agenda. Uh, I need a motion to approve the consent. And thank you. Uh, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
opposed, A, any extensions? Those that carries eight, nothing, thank you. Sorry, nine, nothing. Nine, nothing. Um, now we move on to board committee and liaison updates. And we'll start with the curriculum and student development meeting uh or uh report from Stephen, thank you.
Yes, we met this evening. Um, Mary Ann Connolly, Gabby, and myself. Uh, the agenda was several curric- curriculum adoptions that are seeking Lord of Rumble. It's in about six different areas with several courses within them. I'm going to highlight what I think are some of the important points that were generated in the meeting. But I encourage people to look in their packets for further detail on each of these uh curricular areas. If it's of particular interest to you. So the first area that was discussed, and these were uh new courses. They're gonna be offered next fall, uh as in the C T E area. And it is sports performance and nutrition course. Uh, part of the discussion was, you know, is this something that students have expressed particular interest in? Excuse me, and the response to that was yes, I mean, that was one of the results of student surveys in some courses. That, you know, we thought would be popular or the um. Schools thought would be popular were not on the part of students, and this is something that they want. Uh, this is a hands-on course. It's an elective course. Uh, they will prepare, cook, and eat, and learn about uh nutrition as it relates to. Sports performance. Another course, uh in the English Language Arts area, uh is a new acting workshop. Um, and this is for grades nine through twelve. Uh, a couple of units. Again, this was something that was generated by student interest. Uh, and this and several others that we'll talk about tonight. Part of the process and, you know, the many stages that you can read through, you know, in your packets. But it involves ultimately um a summative performance, foremost. Uh, performance stage production is part of the continuum in this course. Another area, this is in literature and writing, units two and three, grade nine. Uh this was a shift, it was a uh. Changing from a core novel of To Kill a Mockingbird by Harper Lee to Just Mercy by Brian Stevenson. Uh the feeling on this was that Just Mercy covers some of the main learning outcomes. That To Kill a Mockingbird did, but uh is more current and more responsive to what students can connect to. That being said, uh To Kill a Mockingbird is still. Um one of the options that is offered during book club, which is also part. Of the curriculum, which is, it will not be the leading um novel in that course. Moving on to mathematics. And seeking board adoption is grade four enrichment, grade five enrichment. And grade six enrichment, and what that involves, there was a fairly lengthy conversation about. So what are these enrichment courses, and what is the purpose and the focus of them? And basically assessments are made of the students to track where they are, whether they're ahead or behind. Uh and for a lot of the students that have particular strengths in these areas, rather than, you know. The total group instruction where they're sitting through time on something that they're already. Uh very capable of, these enrichment courses are pulled out based upon units, so it's not, you know, for. Uh in extended time, but it is based on uh where a student's personal performance is. And which units. They are strong and could benefit from some enrichment and some focus and rigor in other areas, so. You know, it's a very interesting concept as a model, one in terms of. Being responsive to individual students and where they are, and then codifying that in a program. That moves students in and out based on these units. Uh basically, they come out in small groups from the regular classroom to get that enrichment, it was a fascinating conversation. Music, as I said, there were a number of ones today. There were four main areas that were discussed under the music area that they're seeking board adoption. Grade seven, eight chorus, grade eight acting for the theater. Grade eight musical theater and grade nine, twelve theory composition. Um chorus, um the discussion around that was. Uh you know, it's a course that develops the individual skills of being able to sing as an individual in voice, but it also has a focus on. Learning how to be part of um a group and and being able to blend. And develop the skills that are required for that. Acting for the theater, grade eight. Um three parts of that, learning how to do the addition, the whole process of learning skills related to acting. And then again, this is another one of those courses that has a culminating activity of of doing uh a production. Musical theater, very similar, um but as it relates to musical. Theater skills, they learn about composers. And the nature of what a musical is, and again, a culminating activity of creating a musical theater production. And last not but not least, in the music area was uh. Grades nine to twelve theory composition, and this is basically the foundation, beginning course. Um in music. Composition, um reading the staff and composing melodies and harmonies. Conversation then moved to uh profile of a graduate, many units. And uh. Some of the, you know, really stellar independent study activities that students have done. As a result of the profile of graduate work, you know, and that was, you know. If you look in your package, you'll see some of the results of that, both in terms of the music and. Uh theater, the variety of things in support of that. Next area of conversation was profile of a graduate, many units, and. Most of the focus of that conversation was a shift to being very deliberate. You know, starting in the fourth grade of sharing with students what it is. The profile of the graduate is in pursuit of, so being able to talk to students about inquiry. And citizenship and and collective intelligence. As an entree into the instructional unit, so to tell students, this is what we're going after. This is why it's important, this is why you hear about these things all the time, and part of our conversation, you know, at that area is. You know, we have all heard, you know, for now, for for several years. Profiles the graduate, and I'm pretty confident that our faculty has embraced it, you know, very deeply in the writing of their curriculum. But this was a somewhat of a shift in terms of really involving the students, and not only just. Being the recipients of that instructional practice, but sharing with them, these are the your personal skills. That we're trying to cultivate through this process, you know, it was. It was exciting and and edifying to hear about it. Social studies, curriculum ready uh for board adoption, this was mostly. A result of the change in the state standards, social studies standards, that we're not talking big changes here. Um but it involved uh some revised units, cultural communities in Connecticut. Which, you know, speaks to the uh shift in changes in communities from Native Americans. Uh to current day, uh exploring Connecticut's history, and then Connecticut's government, essentially doesn't change. World languages, curriculum ready for board adoption, Latin two, there are four units there. And American Sign Language, four units there, you can see in your packets the details of that, uh then in A S L. Uh two, there's a strong focus on being aware of deaf culture. And bring some of those experiences to the classroom. I think, yeah, that is essentially it, um there were. Comments from the public, and they were essentially in line with what we heard this evening. That related not directly to what we were talking about in the curriculum committee, but to. Um concerns about changes to the schedule on the four or five level. And we adjourned at six thirty eight, any questions?
I have a question that's slightly off topic, um so you're talking about the um. Theater and um music changes that are gonna come to the next board meeting for us to adopt, right, and that's all high school level? So didn't we just recently adopt um the curriculum for the lower level, the younger levels?
That's middle school as well, it was presented, yeah, so it had a work from.
Four, five, six.
This work here?
Yeah, was that?
Seven, eight.
Sorry.
Seven, eight and high school as well.
Okay.
So, so there was a lot of the areas of curriculum, they're extensive, there's a lot of writing. Uh the music department was a first round adoption, so there were some courses that they didn't make to the threshold. In the time period, these are the courses that they didn't get to write and get formally adopted, so that's why they're moving to formal adoption now, they just finished.
I guess I'm just uh curious as to when we adopted the. Music and theater curriculum for the younger ages, because. Based on the discussions that were happening tonight, or the comments that were made, there was a lot of discussion about curriculum changes, but we haven't actually changed curriculum.
Yeah, I tried to uh correct that language, it's about a model that we're talking about, it's a delivery model. Um curriculum comes within the framework of the model and is written and adopted for that framework. So, yes, in fact, we do have curriculum that's adopted, or say, theater. Um we have a theater curriculum that went through the process, but um just like at the high school, if you don't. Um have enrollment for a course, we don't offer that course, and that curriculum does not get implemented. Um so a lot of the curriculum work that they're talking about tonight is uh electives, so it's kind of a standalone. Um the exception to that is Spanish, that would need to go through a revamping and re-adoption.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for doing.
Stephen, any more questions, all right?
I just wanna. Committee, no, no problem, um I just wanted to say how um it wasn't lost on us. It, you know, as committee members, but just listening to um the presenters tonight during the curriculum meeting. How much they base um their decision-making and how it shapes. Um how certain things really shape um our curriculum, and one of them is student voice and student uh. You know, students having an opportunity to to share what it is they hope to see more of. Um it's it's really a high up there in one of the big reasons why um positive changes are made to our curriculum. Um there's a lot of of work that teachers do behind the scenes that I don't think that that we. Um you know, get to hear about or see, but there are um cutting-edge uh courses that are being created. Um and only due to the fact that teachers are going out there to learn many times on their own time. Um summers and weekends and um uh in any way they can to um gain the knowledge. To therefore then impart it to our kids, and I think it's um important for us to really recognize the the work that teachers are doing. Um to make sure that courses like we heard about tonight um are available for our kids. So I just really wanted to point that out, and then. That whole idea of aligning um all of the work that we do around that profile of the graduate, it's it really. Did not get lost on me, that that is really um a through line. And the last thing that uh I wanted to point out is that. Pretty much every uh thing that they talked about tonight uh was data-driven, was. You know, the time that's spent on stopping and looking at how our kids are doing, and not just at the end of a year, and not just at like certain. Trimesters or at certain points, but it's a daily work in progress, and. Um that work then informs decision-making that, um and again, all of that is being underground, but I really. Um wanted to just really bring some light to that, that 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 work is um to make the the enrichment. Course or the enrichment work that that's being done in those grade levels and in all the grade levels. Um and also the intervention work, it's all due to the fact that there's um very uh. Uh great attention paid to data and students uh on a daily basis, um and so I just wanted to put that.
We also uh learned about the second sign language too in the Latin book, yeah, yeah. So there was a lot.
Yeah, it was.
A lot, but it was, it was very good, yeah.
Next is facilities committee, which also met tonight, Emily?
Yep, the facilities committee met this evening, um we spent most of the time talking, Peter gave a report on. Indoor air quality reports, the ninety-page um stories, if you'd like to read it. Basically, it's an inspection, it's required by state law, uh he presented to the board tonight, and it will be posted. To the school website tomorrow, these um indoor air quality inspections were a result of COVID. So there's basically it's checklist that during facilities staffs conduct annual inspections. Um for indoor air quality issues, keeping an eye out for any problems in particular air handling units, boiler or spoilers and that sort of thing. Um every five years, we're hired to have a more thorough inspection by. An outside professional where they really look at how the air quality units, H VAC units are working. That will be a budget item, it's, he said, around fifty thousand dollars um per school to do that, it's a big. Deal, and we'll sort of spread it out, um ideally, one year at one school at a time. I know actually need advice at this time, but he's just sort of giving us an update on that process that they go through. Um and it's using E P's program for that, uh then Peter gave some project status updates. A lot of um what we've heard from previous meetings, brown playground work moving forward, the brown pre-K room conversion. Um they have scope and final plans, work is starting April twelfth. Um moving forward with brown interior signage, the media center, they're putting in new floors and new shelving in that library. Um they've ordered five now some boxes for the district-wide move management, he seemed very excited about that. Um and as he said in quotes, everything is perfect for Neck River. Um status quo, everything's on time, everything's on budget there, give some updates on pulse and site signage. Um and then we talked briefly about how, I think we mentioned before, a group of students from the high school went over to Neck River to kind of have a tour. Of the site and see how the construction work goes, the project design, and. Um apparently, there's a a group of students from a Daniel Hand TV or video production class also doing something, and. Peter was saying how Gilbane and Tekton have been so um inviting and supportive for students who are interested in the field. Going over to see the site, making themselves available, he said, you know, all the lead contacts have shared their. Contact information with faculty at the high school, if students are interested in that kind of work, so really cool. Um career pathways that students are seeing ones on, and so Peter just spoke so highly about those partners there. Um we did not have any public comment, we adjourned at seven oh five, I don't know if any members of our committee wanna add anything else to that. Was a pretty brief meeting.
Just so we have to uh keep in mind the budget impacts of that um every five year. So they they were originally gonna have it be like all at once, and then because there's only like five um professionals in the state. That would be doing all of the work for all of the schools and all of the state, there are some twenty percent of your um earnings. Per year have to be done, and he would be doing, he would have to submit it like as they come in, so most likely the Daniel Hand and Neck River will happen at the same time. Um and those um reports would go in at the same time, so then go looking forward. It'll be like, it'll be five. It'll be five years from then, it's every five years that you. So in five years, those two schools would then come do at the same time, and that would have a definite budget impact, it would have to be its own line item or something like that. And then again, we have you have to include Brown and Paulson as well, so hopefully they will not be the same year, but uh it's whenever it happens. That's just how I how it will be.
And then the one bit of good news that um Peter shared with us is that, um while it's a fairly expensive, a fairly costly. Expense item in the um in the transition budget um to to conduct the move. Um and you have to hire a company to do it, whatever, um the quotes that we got um came in better than we feared. And so that part of the project is also looking uh to be positioned very well in terms of budget and a lot of time. So it's always good to hear, any other questions for facilities, for Emily? Seeing none, thank you, finance committee, Galen.
All right, thank you, Seth, um we had a very short meeting on December seventh, it was opened at five thirty-four and closed at five fifty. In which Dr. Duncan Stacey reviewed many of the issues that we qualified on tonight's presentation. And I don't believe there are any questions um at the meeting.
No questions for finance? Thank you very much, Galen, personnel committee, Marie.
We have not met, it's not.
Thank you, policy committee, Diane, guys, looking forward to this one.
So as you know, I like to tally up um the policies that we've either rescinded, reviewed, or adopted, or revised. Um in the past year, so in twenty twenty-two, we did a hundred and two, and in twenty twenty-three, we did.
So in twenty twenty-two, we did a hundred and two, and in twenty twenty-three, we did eighty-two. And so that whole represents how many we did in twenty twenty-four, and we did, general, a hundred and three.
Wow. Oh, wow, those policies.
So, um, tonight we start the new year with another policy for review, a second reading tonight, policy ninety to ten, role of board and members. And the reason this is up, um, for review again is because we added language to include. Adoption of the district vision and mission as a board responsibility, so if you, um, read it in your packet, which you probably should have already. Um, you'll see it's literally like, uh, one or two sentences that changed, um. And because it's a nine thousand series, it layers a two-thirds vote of the board. And that's an action item for tonight, end of report, uh, we did not meet in December, but we will meet, uh, January twenty-first, end of report.
Anybody have any questions for Diane? Um, anybody have any questions about the item that brought the role of board members that we're gonna be voting on later, no? Okay, thank you, um.
Uh, thank you, Zoe, for all her hard work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, so. But Emily is on, there you are.
So we met on December twelfth, um, and we had a superintendent's perspective, Susan Leonard for Norwich, uh, superintendent. And Ashley Algren, curriculum coordinator, it was interesting because she talked a little bit about. The reading, and they talked about geodes and all the same things that we have talked about, so that was very interesting. Um, I can leave this if someone wants to read the whole thing, uh, then we just went to agency updates and, and Kate Erickson just gave. You know, a, a short highlight of all the different, uh, changes at all the different schools there. There's a lot, you know, we, we meet for like three hours, so. If you ever want the printout, I, I want a meeting on Thursday.
Good. Any questions? Thank you very much, Marie. Uh, Marie, no. Very, thank you very much, Mary Ann, sorry. Um, all right, action item, number nine. I need a motion to adopt the proposed geometry textbook, geometry concepts and connections, uh, this was presented at the last meeting, so.
Second.
Stephen, and second was. Diane? Or was it Marie? Let's.
No.
All right, uh, any questions, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Uh, motion carries nine, nothing. All right, action item ten, I need a motion to approve a donation from Steady Photography to Jeffrey Elementary School. In the amount of one thousand six hundred eleven dollars, sixty-eight cents for student activities.
Sold.
Emily, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Diane? Any discussion?
I guess I just wondered what some pursuit, you know, how does that work? I mean, if.
Most of the photography, most of the photography companies now offer like, a, I'm not gonna call it a kickback, but that's the easiest way to. Uh, you know, based on the, based on the money they make, they'll.
For taking the picture for the pictures, of the school picture.
It is every year, I'm, yeah, they give like a percentage, yeah, I just.
Yeah. Any other questions, discussion, all in favor of accepting that, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay, any abstentions, motion carries nine, nothing. Thank you, uh, action item eleven, I need a motion to approve policy ninety-two ten, role of board and members. And again, that's just a, a single item, um, to address, um, the board, um, reviewing from time to time the. Uh, mission and vision statement.
So, second.
Yeah, seconded by Mary, Jill's head, Kathy?
You can put your hand.
Mary Kathy.
They just knew they're all.
No, I looked, you were hiding behind England, and I heard it coming from that direction, and I was like, no, that's Kathy's voice.
Super stop.
No, yeah. All right.
Sorry.
Um, any, any questions or discussions on the changes to the role of board and members, um, policy ninety-two ten? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay, any abstentions, motion carries nine, nothing, thank you. Action item number eleven, I need a, oh, twelve, sorry, thank you, action item number twelve. Motion to approve the minutes of the December tenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting, although that was so last year. Can I get a motion?
Someone.
Diane, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Voice I recognize, thank you, Mary. All right, um, any discussion, any requested changes, edits, all in favor, aye? All opposed, nay, any abstentions? Motion carries nine, nothing, thank you. Uh, any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
General.
Yeah, seconded by, yeah, Marie. Uh, all in favor, aye, all opposed, nay, any abstentions, you are adjourned, thanks.